I'd like to call to order the October 4th, 2016 meeting of the Riverton City Council Finance Committee to order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to pay the following claims of eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-three cents and checks written for payroll and liabilities on the date of September 16th in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Manual checks in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents for a total of seven hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions or discussions?
No, I've reviewed this printout and unfortunately, we can't take twenty or thirty minutes to discuss it, but I don't see anything wrong with it.
Okay, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and meeting adjourned.
Does anybody have anything?
They're good.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.
I now call the October 4th, 2016 regular council meeting of the city of Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And after that, I'll offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve as members of the Riverton City Council and look forward to our meeting this evening, that we might be able to serve the needs of the city of Riverton and pray for guidance and direction, that we might be able to understand the issues that come before us and that we might be able to work together to solve the problems that confront the city. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
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 Would the city secretary please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present and declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as it's been presented.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Communications from the floor, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Okay. Consent agenda with the finance director, please read the consent agenda items by title only.
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, September 20th, 2016, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, October 4th, 2016, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations, October 4th, 2016. Approval of discharged fines for deceased defendants for October 2016.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion? Go ahead.
Recommendations from the finance committee for pay claims to pay in the amount of eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Checks written for payroll liability for nine sixteen of sixteen in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Manual checks in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents for a total of seven hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda.
Your Honor, make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve consent. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Next item is presentation regarding the Riverton Senior Center by Jane Noldy.
Well, I'm Jane Noldy. I'm the new executive director at the Riverton Senior Center. I'm also the executive director at the Lander Senior Center. I'm not sure if you have questions, I can try to answer them. We're making some changes at the center and updating some different things. All of the required reports have been entered, sent into the Division on Aging and Wyoming Department of Transportation. Everything's current. I, the head cook in Lander has come over to Riverton to change, to help with procedures and safety measures and so forth in the kitchen. Probably the big news is we are having an election for the board of directors. We have five members that we need to fill those chairs, and so the election is in process right now. It'll run through the 10th, and then there'll be a different board of directors. Three older members are still on the board because they had terms, but we'll have five other new people coming in. Everything is running well there. It's been running well. There hasn't been any problems like previously happened in years before. There wasn't anything like that. It mainly was policy and procedures. Is there any questions or...
Your Honor, I have one question. Who all participates in the voting for the board of directors?
The seniors at the senior center.
Okay, thank you.
If you're sixty and older, you're a senior, and you can come vote, but you only get one vote. But it's open, it's open to the public, and this year's a little different than following years will be in that the newsletters, normally we send out a ballot in the newsletter, and then we have ballots at the center. You know, so a couple can both vote, but we didn't really have the chance this year to advertise as well as we would normally. Our year starts, our fiscal year starts the first of October, so we had a short period to get things in there and running again. So this one's a little odd, and the terms will be, we had a couple members that have resigned, and so we will be filling their terms and then going from there. We also have new bylaws that states there will be elections and, you know, things like that. So we're working on an employee manual and different things for the employees, but we'll get, have everything changed and get it in. I haven't been to the endowment meeting yet, but Holly gave me the date, and so we'll meet there. And I work with an endowment with the Lander Center and the Lander City Council, so I'm aware of... Riverton's a little different because of the court case and stuff, but basically, it's the same. The taxpayers wanted certain things, and that's what we'll abide with.
Okay.
And I guess, ma'am, you've answered part of my question, because I think when we went through our big discussion with our center, it was, it was brought up that Lander has spent below that quote balance that Riverton has tried to maintain.
No, we're fine.
Okay, and that's what I was going to ask you, whether that was going to raise any concerns with you of having to stay within that constraint?
No, no. It, it will. There are some things that I think I would like to talk to the endowment about, kind of similar. In Lander, we look at the building as it is a city building, and we lease the building. The senior center leases the building, just like they do here in Riverton. And what we've tried to do in Lander is anything that was attached to the building comes out of the endowment, meaning if you replace dishwasher or a freezer, that's a built-in freezer or refrigerator or something, that if the senior center was to move, that would still stay with the building. We've tried to, tried to keep that, that it would stay with the city building, you know, kind of keep, to keep the cut. The endowment's not for buying computers or buying telephones or things like that. It's for things with the building, to maintain that building, you know, is, is how we look at it in Lander. They have paid utilities, and this year, I got some, worked into some grants that will be taking care of the utilities in Lander. So in order to help save some of the money in the endowment, but like replacing a roof or replacing carpet or something that is physically attached is what, how Lander has done it. So that was one of the things I want to talk to the endowment board and see how we can work, you know, so I know what the rules are or how things are meant to be, and I understand that, you know, the money's getting, we aren't earning the interest like we did in the eighties and when this was all planned, you know. So I understand that, and I think there's something that the councils and so forth, we need to look at to see what we can do to help get that endowment built back up somehow, because the center does save the city money. It saves the county money. It saves the state money. I mean, we go to the legislators, you know, in Cheyenne, and they see the figures of how we can save people money by keeping seniors in their home rather than going to a nursing home and so forth. So, you know, it's, it's not just the seniors standing out there, gimme, gimme, gimme. You know, there's, we also help in other ways, so, but you're welcome to come in. We've got good cooks, good food, and I'm sure there's lots of people, as you can tell, that would like to visit with you and whatever if you'd come in, but, but my door's always open, and so if you have any questions or anything, call me, you know. I'm more than willing to answer anything that you have, and it's, it's open. I mean, we're, the books are open or whatever. I mean, employee matters, that's different, as you guys know, but no hesitation, I don't, if I can't tell you the answer right then and there, so don't ask me how many meals we serve, because I can't tell you that, but I'll find out if you, because it's new. But everything is, is doing well. The state has released funds because they were withholding funds. They have released funds, so we have that, and we're going to be able to close our books for this year and then move on to next year and do that.
So ju- just for my clarification, then, there's been a rewrite on the, the...
Bylaws.
Bylaws, okay, and that now requires an election from the body, okay? And you have five vacancies now?
Mm-hmm. We have eight, eight people running for the election, and we need to fill five vacancies.
Okay, and how many people do you have on the board total?
There'll be a maximum of nine.
Nine, okay. Okay. Anybody else? Sean?
First, thank you for stepping in and trying to get this straightened out. It was, I don't know how many nights some people lost sleep over trying to get this thing figured out. So we're grateful for your efforts. I just have a couple questions. So when the elections happen and you have the full body, so who will be managing the endowment, and will it going to be the whole board? Because before, it was kind of one person we dealt with about that. I'm just trying to figure out, like, if there's an overpayment from the endowment or if there's an underpayment, if there's something that we think, is that going to be coming from you, is it going to be coming from the body that's being elected?
Well, probably me.
And how, from you?
Yeah, but it will be, I mean, the board is going to know.
Right.
Because I report to the board, and in my reports, I give that information. They need to know, you know. I mean, their job is, is policy and procedure and to see that things are, are running right, but their job's not to run the center and the endowment, so it'll be me, and there may be members of the board that will come to the meetings. I don't know, you know, that's kind of new. I don't know how they were before, but it's fine if they do. But generally, you'll probably work with me if you have questions or something, and we'll have that in there.
Lee? I have one question. You made a reference to if you had questions, they'd give you a call. Could we have that phone number?
Sure. You can call me at the center, which is eight-five-six-six-three-three-two.
Pardon me?
Eight-five-six-six-three-three-two. I'll give you the Lander Center too, because I kind of run back and forth. I have a red truck, so if you see me on the highway, look out. Three-three-two-two-seven-four-six.
Thank you.
Okay, and the staff in both places, they'll hunt me down. I kind of run around the place, but they'll find me. Yep, and if you want more reports and more detailed stuff, just let me know what you'd like, and I can give it to you. We're still kind of learning the ropes over there, so to speak, so, but I did want to assure everybody that the state is happy, YDOT's happy, and so hopefully, the council will be happy too. And I think the board is. I can't really speak for them, but the reaction after the first meeting was good, so I think... And the seniors seem to be happy, and the staff in the kitchen were dancing the other day. Kind of unusual to see them happy and dancing around, so maybe things are getting better.
Well, that's, that's, that's excellent, and, and, and echoing what Sean said, we really do appreciate your willingness to, to get involved in this and come over here to Riverton, and I just hope you don't spread yourself so thin that, you know, the rear, that the Lander facility starts to suffer.
No. I, I love my job, and I, and I, I'll get it organized to where we, you know, it'll work, because I'm not going to spend my life running up and down the highway, but, you know. So, but I will. We'll get it worked out, and it'll work, and right now, it's more time over here because I want to know exactly how it runs and how everything goes and, you know, that way. We had a motor go out on one of the heating things or something, and so it's things like that. I mean, I want to know how it is. One thing I do have a question of, though, how do we turn the heat down? It's pretty warm in a couple of the offices. I mean, they have a fan running because it's so warm. Does anybody know? Nobody can tell me how you turn the heat.
Why do you all look at me? I'm the youngest one here. I've explained this to you guys multiple times.
I was, I, it was just, it was just, it was just the look on your face that...
I don't know. I don't know that one.
Stephen, do we have?
We'll have Keith come over and...
Okay, because, you know, we, I know that, that you want to lock the system in a sense. I understand that, but it's pretty warm, and why waste more electricity running fans if we can turn it down?
Lee?
Okay, I, refresh my memory. When was the elections going to be over?
October 10th.
And...
And then the way we figure those is we will have, and I'll be involved in this too. We will have three people. One will read the ballots, and two will mark the votes, and the two that mark the votes have to equal each other, and if they don't, we start over and read the ballots again. So it's, it's, you know, fair that way, and there's no decisions.
And when will the new board take over?
The first meeting is October 19th. It's the third Tuesday, 18th, okay, 18th. Anyway, that's when they'll, they'll be notified before that, but then they'll come in then, and they'll get their bylaws, and we sign confidentiality agreements, because the stuff that we have at the center is confidential, and so...
Thank you.
And they'll get a look at the grants and stuff.
Good, thank you. Holly?
Just wanted to, I guess, do a few questions real fast, but thank you so much. I really have enjoyed working with you. Like, we've gotten to have two meetings now, and it's been really nice just to be able to sit down and have the open communication. I've really enjoyed that. As far as the endowment meeting, I really am still encouraging that we have the board there just because I feel like that transparency and that openness. So as long as you guys are good with it and the board is open to it, I think that that's our best bet. If you could just kind of touch for me, I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer, but I've had a lot of people ask me, and I've tried to explain a little bit, but if you could explain exactly why the funds were withheld from the state and like kind of why we were withholding them. You don't have to go into explicit detail, but if you could kind of just explain that to everybody?
Well, the state, when, we have reports that we have to send in to the state, the different Division on Aging and YDOT and stuff, and kind of their leverage, if you don't send in those reports, they can withhold the funds, because they can't give out funds for no reason, so to speak. And so there were some delays on some reports, and it's not just financial reports. We have to keep track of the number of rides, the number of meals, what type of rider on the public transportation, if they're elderly, if they're public, if they, you know, use a wheelchair or whatever. And if those reports aren't sent in, then they will withhold funds until it's, you know, they're caught up. And so we have been putting, entering those reports and getting all that information in that they needed. And so because we've gotten it done, and then they've now released the funds to us, so...
And then just on the endowment board meeting, it's going to be November 15th at 10:30 at the senior center, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, everybody's welcome. It's, you know, there's nothing closed. Meetings are open. The board meetings are open unless it involves an employee, and then, you know, we will close for, for that. But they're always open. We have a pretty good crowd at the meetings, the last one anyway. I've only attended one, so, but, so you're welcome to come anytime.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Oh, Sean, one more.
And what's, you guys have a set day that you guys meet as just your normal meetings?
The board meetings? It's the third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday of every month?
Mm-hmm. Nine o'clock.
At nine?
We can call special meetings if we need it, but that's basically the, you know, has the financial reports and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you all for the interest that you've shown in the senior center, and we hope we're making progress. Everybody's happy and excited and feeling like we're on the right track. Okay, good, thank you. All right. The next item of business on the agenda is a mayor's proclamation with regards to Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The month of October is, every, every year on the month of October, we, we, I, I, I don't want to use the word "celebrate" Domestic Violence Month. That is the wrong, you know, I, awareness is not, is not the, you know, celebration is not the case, where so many, so many families are devastated by abusive activities of people in that home, and we really need to do something better than what we do as a society to deal with that. And, and so we had a kickoff this last weekend at the city park, and Holly was able to be there to represent the city, and the chief was there, and, and we, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of this. If you see purple ribbons tied on trees and that type of thing, you'll understand what that's all about. I have on my purple shirt, just so that, just so that we can call attention to the problem that we have today with domestic violence. And, and so there's a proclamation to be signed, and I'll see that that's taken care of, and we, we just want to give thanks for the people in the Domestic Violence Office that deal with folks and provide them with the assistance that they need, so. The next item is a public hearing and consideration of a restaurant liquor license application for Chopsticks Asian Bistro. Could we have the finance directors report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The city clerk's office has received a completed application for a new restaurant liquor license from Chopsticks Asian Bistro, doing business as Chopsticks. All applicable fees have been paid, and the state liquor division has certified the application complete. It is the staff's recommendation to approve this liquor license.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we open the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we open the public hearing. I now declare the, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes. With other applicable laws, I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Your Honor, seeing none, I would move...
Your honor, seeing none, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the public hearing is now closed. Chair would entertain a motion?
Your honor, make a motion that we approve the restaurant liquor license application for Chopstick Asian Bistro.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question. Refresh my memory about a restaurant liquor license. That's where it, the drink is prepared, like in a back room and then it's brought out to your table? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, your honor, that is correct. Uh, it has to be prepared in the back and they have to have so much food served compared to the liquor. Compared to a bar and grill that you'd see like at Applebee's where the bar is actually out in the open. That's a bar and grill license, but a restaurant is just, it's prepared in a, in a specific area and brought out by a waitress or waiter and.
Yeah, called a dispensing room, I think, by the state. And then the other thing is, is it forty percent? Can't, you can't exceed forty percent revenue for, for alcohol. So sixty percent or more of your take has to be based on food in order for it to qualify as a restaurant liquor license. And you can't sell alcohol to go and you can't, um, and you, and you've got limited hours of operation. You, you know, you have to be open to sell food anytime you're selling alcohol.
Okay, no catering.
No catering, that's right. This is, this is far less than a retail liquor license for a while. Okay? It's a little confusing because we have a number of restaurants in Riverton that have full retail liquor licenses. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item is consideration of traffic control changes Willow Creek Elementary School. Chief of Police, report, please.
Thank you, your honor. According to Riverton Municipal Code ten point zero four point zero seven zero, the city council has to approve all changes to traffic control devices in the city for them to be enforceable and, and legitimate. Well, with the addition of Willow Creek Elementary down in the twelve hundred block of Monroe, there's been a pretty drastic change to the traffic patterns down there. Uh, so two things really have happened. One is the construction of the school and all of the attendant traffic for the school. But the second part is that Major Avenue, which runs north and south on the west side of that school was previously, uh, not, not even quite a dirt road. I wasn't even sure that that was a, a city street at one point, um, has been paved and, and so a lot of traffic is flowing around that school as a new access point to Main Street. So the principal, Jeremy Hill, he's the principal at Willow Creek, has asked, uh, the city through our, we have a formal process for requesting that, which is included in your packet, uh, requested that a four-way stop sign be put in at the intersection of Spire and Monroe. Spire is sort of the main north-south street in the neighborhood directly east of the school. Uh, currently it's a, it's just a two-way stop, so the Spire traffic stops, but Monroe does not. Uh, the, the city's, uh, you know, traffic review committee, which is the public works director and the city administrator and myself, looked at that. It does look like a, a place that a four-way stop is appropriate. Uh, we also would ask the city, uh, council to make the, uh, streets around the school directly. So west of that intersection going westbound and, and southbound from about Riverview-ish, uh, into a school zone. So that would be consistent as a speed limit, uh, with the other elementary schools in town. So that's what we ask for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Um, so a motion is needed to, approve changes? I, I, I don't know how to word it. We don't, we don't know what to say.
So the placement of a four-way stop and a school zone around.
At Spire, in a school zone, okay, that would.
Surrounding the school.
Mon- Monroe and the extension on over to Riverview. Okay.
Your honor, I'd like to make that motion exactly as Mr. Weaver said.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, second, okay. Thanks, Mark. All right, any discussion?
Your honor, I have a question.
Lee?
Chief, how far up Monroe will that go?
Well, really it's just gonna be Monroe and about the twelve hundred block. So directly west of Spire will place a sign somewhere, the public works department will. Uh, so really, you know, the traffic coming westbound to Spire and Monroe will be thirty miles an hour. When they leave that intersection, as they get closer to the school, then it'll become a twenty right after that. Uh, so somewhere in there, wherever makes sense on what property the city can access and, and put those signs. Really just trying to get them down to twenty prior to hitting the school's property line and the same thing sort of on the other side on Major Avenue.
Thank you.
Will there be any crossing guards or any type of flag preparation or any type of safeguards for crossing?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, those crossing guards are all, um, employees of the school district. I've not personally spoken with Mr. Hill about what the, uh, the plan is for that, but I do know that they plan on, on directing foot traffic to that intersection to cross. And so, uh, I'd, I'd, I'd be happy to speak to them and find out exactly what their plans are, but as of this evening, I don't know.
So are you saying the twenty mile an hour speed limit's gonna go around Monroe, around the corner and then all the way to Riverview? Or are you gonna stop at the corner or?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's just going to be essentially property line to property line. Whatever the back edge of their property line as it sort of prolongates out into Major Avenue would be about where the school zone, you know, perhaps ten or fifteen feet north of that, just to get the traffic down to twenty by the time it hits the school's property line.
So not all the way to, uh, Adams?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Gores, have you got a question? Come to the mic, please.
As you all know, I'm Jim Gores. Uh, our firm, on behalf of the school district, prepared a traffic study for that school. And there are specific recommendations in that study, uh, to be implemented, uh, for traffic control in and around the school. Uh, that was prepared on behalf of the school board and I believe it's up to them to share that information with you to whatever degree they feel appropriate, but that information is out there and available. It covers the discussion of where to, what the stop sign as the chief has, has indicated. It also recommends where to place the twenty mile an hour speed limit signs. It also makes some recommendations as to flashing warnings for the crosswalks in the area. So, uh, avail yourselves to that if that's your wish.
Thank you.
Mr., Mr. Mayor, I assume we don't have that data in front of us?
Have you, have you seen that data, chief?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, I've not.
Yeah, your honor, see that, when they apply for this, there's a process and you, it's included in our packets. Um, and I'm surprised that wasn't included because, uh, that, that's something that would, would have been useful.
Sure. Well, take that into account, I guess, when we're working on it. Okay? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Uh, the next item is council committee reports and council member roundtable. Uh, Mr. Bailey, have you got anything for us tonight?
Um, I just had the, it was your last Monday of going and speaking to the Lions Club about the one percent projects that we've completed since the one percent tax was put into place. And got a real good reception from them and, uh, Kyle joined me for that meeting and, I think it was pretty impressive the amount of work that we've got done with that one cent funds for, for the city of Riverton. And we've made a lot of really nice improvements to our streets and curbs and gutters and, and, uh, again, I hope we can continue to do this moving forward.
Thanks for your time doing that.
You bet.
Mike? Martin?
Uh, sir, just a couple of, uh, dates. Uh, the twenty-fourth of October at the Manhattan Restaurant is the Veterans Dinner. Uh, tickets for that are on sale at Veterans Hall. Um, a couple, month or so out, but eleven November again will be the, uh, Veterans Breakfast at, uh, down at the fairgrounds for everybody. And, uh, twelve November, the, uh, Marine Corps League is having their, uh, their ball out at the, uh, golf course.
Okay.
Uh, your honor, I'm gonna defer the, uh, Riverton School District Number Twenty-Five Rec Board meeting to Councilwoman Gibbon.
Okay.
I wasn't there.
You weren't there? Okay. Mr. Larson?
I have nothing here.
Mr. Peterson?
Not tonight, sir.
Ms. Gibbon?
Um, so for the school board, we paid bills last night. That was the exciting thing. That was all. Um, and then for attending the domestic violence event on Thursday, it was definitely an eye-opener. I'd never been to one of those. So I'm not gonna lie, it was kind of a shocking thing to hear the statistics and to see all of the, um, silhouettes that they put out and hear the stories and just kinda be involved in it. At one point, I think I was, I kinda became even overwhelmed because you were hearing them speak. And I think everybody kinda just assumes, well, it doesn't happen in our neighborhood or our communities, but it does. It happens here and it is a big problem. And so if you suspect something's going on, don't take the chance. I know as much as you probably don't want me to say this, like, call it in, better safe than sorry. So, um, Mike being there, I mean, it was amazing to just be part of that. So I was very honored. Um, but one is too many to hear that somebody didn't survive or somebody was a victim. And so, be part of it, get your voice out and make sure that it stops. And I know that we're not gonna be able to stop at all, but if we can continue to get awareness and really push the issue, maybe, you know, start with the younger generations, cause that was their biggest thing, is that it starts at home. And if they see the dads doing it to their moms, it's, what was the statistic, like ninety, was it three percent?
Uh, I think that, I think they're, they're using about thirty-five percent right now as a, something they can prove, but they suspect it's probably in the seventies or eighties.
And that chances are that they're going to do the same thing when they're older. And so if we can stop it, I definitely think that we should, so. Thank you honestly for not being able to go, cause I didn't, honestly would have never went to it. I didn't know really much about it. So being able to go to it was an eye-opener and.
Yeah, maybe next year we all oughta go, huh?
Maybe. I mean, seriously, it was very amazing. And honestly, I think that, that city park should have been packed and there wasn't as many people there as I thought there was gonna be. They had a really good turnout, but getting more people to know about it and getting involved in that kinda stuff, I think it could change our community greatly, so.
Even, even with a barbecue?
Yeah.
Okay, free, free food, huh?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that's good. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate you being able to attend. Stephen?
A few things, your honor. Uh, first is we have an open house ribbon cutting for Community Health Center. Uh, that's gonna be at two thousand two West Sunset. That's in the Fremont, uh, therapy, uh, same area. This is the same group that was down on Twelfth Street and near the old hospital. Um, their lease expired and so they found this new one and apparently changed their name. And so they're just trying to get the awareness out so people know where they're at. So if you're interested in coming, that's Thursday the sixth, which is this Thursday at ten o'clock in the morning. Um, the other issue is, and this will be probably a, a later discussion, um, we have a couple of, we have one lease coming up on a cell phone tower. We, we have cell phone tower leases and then we have internet providers. And they're basically ground leases. And, uh, one is coming up. It's gonna expire this week. And a couple of the other ones are, are years in, in, in the future. But I guess what I'm looking for from the council is some direction in ways of, we are sort, charging so little that it's almost embarrassing compared to other communities. And so I have, went out and sent an email to my fellow city administrators and managers across the state and the least amount that I could find was a thousand per month. We have a lease agreement right now that's twenty-six hundred per year. And so, I mean, when we're talking about a monthly of a thousand and really the average is about fifteen hundred a month. It ranges anywhere from a thousand a month all the way up to three thousand a month that some of these cities are getting for cell phone tower, uh, lease space. And so I'm gonna be starting some negotiations with some of these companies and I want at least some direction from the council, so I'm not going out on a wim here and shooting for the moon and then you guys to say, well, oh, that's way too high or we, we should be going a lot lower or. Um, but I, I guess what I was looking at is shooting for the average. Which the average is about fifteen hundred dollars a month. And there are some that are a little bit less and there's some that are quite a bit more. Um, but when we have leases that are twenty-six hundred per year, when you could be getting fifteen hundred a month, that, that's quite a bit different. I think that's what the market rate is. Um, when I talked to Carter that was up in Gillette, um, there was Verizon that was sending them a, a lease agreement. And before they'd even talked, you were already offering fifteen hundred dollars a month, so before negotiations even started. So they obviously know what the market rate is. So I guess I'm just looking for a little bit of direction so that when I start talking to these individuals that I'm not just talking for myself, that the council is saying, yeah, we should be at market rate and not the highest or the lowest, but kind of in the middle.
Your honor.
What is the average?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred is.
A month.
Your honor. And, and did you take into account that, I, I don't know how they would rate those, but it, I would assume a community that has a, a community of ten thousand would be a different rate than a Cheyenne that's a community of fifty or sixty thousand.
Your honor, I didn't really look at it that way, cause most of them were based on, there's apparently companies out there that you can hire that say, you know, you've got a prime location here, they can't really go anywhere else and, um, this is what the market rate is. I'm not sure if they base it on. Some of them, it may be based on, apparently on, on a tower, you can put a couple like shoeboxes is what they put on there. So some of them will say, how many shoeboxes you have on there? Are you based on how much it's gonna cost? Because each of those shoeboxes has so much bandwidth or, um, but when I was looking at these, I have Gillette, Powell, Jackson, Green River, Cody and Casper. So there's a mix of, uh, of ones that are, you know, probably Cody and Green River are the closest to us and they're twenty-two hundred a month or fourteen hundred a month. So I think the fifteen hundred is, is a pretty good average.
What's the lowest rate and what's the highest rate?
Highest rate is three thousand and the lowest is a thousand. Per month.
Thank you.
Is this gonna affect how much people pay for their cell phone bills? I mean, is that gonna increase the prices around here? That's something that we've looked at. I mean, I.
I, I'm sure that's probably one of the arguments they use, but I mean, they have cell phone lease spaces all over the United States. And so I, I don't think they do specifically to say, your rate's gonna be this, cause Riverton's only charging two thousand a year compared to other places who are charging you two thousand a month. It's gonna go in their ultimate pot and they're get, they gotta come up with that money, but I, I just, I mean, overall, I think we need to be somewhat close to the average, otherwise, I mean, when we're looking for revenue, it, especially in these times, um, this is, this is a good opportunity.
Oh, I agree. I just wanna make sure that we don't say, hey, you, you're only giving us two hundred and eighty dollars a month. We want fifteen hundred dollars. Okay, fine, you guys are now gonna be this month, a month for your cell phone bill and then we have.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, your honor, I, I think it would have to be overall because their rates are not specific to a certain area. It, it would have to be overall. They would be raising their rates across the country.
Okay. Carl?
How long of a contract are we talking? Is this a twenty-year contract or a five-week contract or, uh, do you realize what that percentage increase is?
Yeah, I know.
Hold on.
It's, it's enormous.
I don't want a glib answer like that. Yeah, I know. It's somebody else's money. It's my money. Uh, and going from two hundred and eighty-eight dollars to fifteen hundred dollars, if that were my property, I would go crazy. I would be happy to take the money, but, you know, simply because we were not doing, uh, uh, cell phones, how long is the contract gonna be?
Your honor, most of the contracts that I've seen are about twenty years and they have five-year increments. And, and a lot of these, even these other ones that I've looked at other communities, they have a. they have a percent increase every year. So, for instance, in Jackson, not only are they getting fifteen hundred a month, but every year it goes up three and a half percent. And so, uh... So, so they have increments. Most of them are at least fifteen to twenty years and sometimes twenty-five years. But, but, but a lot of them have incrementals so they can be renewed every five years.
Your Honor...
Mr. Bailey? I, I guess it would be prudent for us to thoroughly research what the market rates are. And maybe they can give you the, you know, where you're looking and getting it from the cities, maybe they can tell you what their rates are around if they're allowed to do that. I don't know if they are. But I, I think it would be reasonable for us to look for what reasonable rates are. I mean, there's cell phone towers around here that aren't on city property too, so I think, I think we need to look at those. And then, again, bring us all that data and we need to decide where we're at. And I agree, I mean, it's a huge raise, but we've probably been negligent in the past of not keeping up with the times. Um, and I, you know, they're not gonna call you up and go, oh, yeah, by the way, you're way too cheap, you know?
Your Honor.
So...
Colonel, what's the rate in Lander?
I didn't, I don't have that one, but I, I can find out.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we have a private citizen here that I'm trying to get a hold of that has some leases and trying to find that rate too. Because one of the issues we have is Wyoming.com is one of them. Now, they don't have cell phone, but they have internet and telephone and all that, and they're a local one, and they're, they're one of the lowest that we have, uh, per year. And so, I'm sure the argument's gonna be, hey, we're local, we should treat us differently than everybody else. Um, but, yeah, I, I think Councilman Bailey hit it on the numbers. I think a lot of these have just been renewed and it's never been looked at to see what really is the market rate, and we've just fallen that so far behind. It's the same thing you can get with your water and sewer rates, you can get so far behind and then you have to have you do, do a huge increase because you haven't been looking at them over the years.
So, have you, uh, gotten any help?
I'm not sure.
Uh, do you want a motion?
Well, if, if that's what it's gonna take, I just, I just, I'd wanna know if we wanna be somewhat in the middle or...
Your Honor, Lee?
When do you start planning on negotiating with these companies?
Uh, this one, I'm starting on Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Yeah, 'cause there's one that, that's expiring this week.
Now, with the other ones that we have that we have, say, for example, they have ten years left on their lease, we can still change the rate, correct?
No.
By giving them so, so much notice ahead of time?
No. It, we can't. I mean, a lot of these, some of them, the next one's expiring like in two thousand twenty-one. And so, the way it's structured in the current lease agreements, it's got certain clauses in there. And so, I guess I'm just trying to get some direction so that once we start with one, when the next one comes up, we can keep with market. And if, if that's what we're trying to do is keep with the market rate, then, otherwise, we're picking numbers out of a, out of a hat and hoping it, it sticks and we have no rhyme or reason for setting the rates.
Well, this, this is, this is not an uncommon situation because I can remember at some point in time on council where we talked about the rent for the radio, um, buildings that are on Griffey Hill. And, uh, and at that time, we decided that what we needed to do was go market rate and, uh, and try to charge on those buildings by the, by the square foot for the land and that type of thing, and try to figure out some way to, to justify, uh, or, or to come up with a number, a reasonable number for what that was. Because I think a couple of these guys were paying like a hundred dollars a year is what they were, what they were paying for their radio tower station. So, Mr. Bailey?
And I guess to me, the, having a twenty-year lease, for example, compared to a ten-year lease could cut both ways. You know, that market in ten years could be way higher than it would be now or maybe way lower. So, um, you know, I would think that industry's gonna continue to grow and space is gonna be more and more valuable, so, you know, I would think having a shorter-term lease would probably be in our advantage so that we have the ability to look at it on a more recent basis. You know, because if those were a twenty-year lease, twenty years ago, the value of that was far, far less than what it is now. So, I think in that respect, you know, that long...
Twenty, twenty years...
Twenty years ago, there almost weren't cell phones.
No cell phones. So, so you just, you, you just don't have a, so, you know, having this, you know, I, I think in that kind of an industry, a five-year, a five-year lead is a, is a terrific, uh, commitment. Um, you know, things change very rapidly, so, um, I, I guess I'm hearing, I guess I'm hearing renegotiate, renegotiate the price every five years is for...
Your Honor, I have one more request. Could we have, or especially me, I would like to see a list of all the leases we have and when they expire?
Yeah.
Sure. And I guess, you know, seeing as how you're that close to starting negotiations, you know, I think, you know, he's, I think we do have a good idea as to across the state what that market rate is. And I, and I think if Mr. Weaver gets the rate from Lander and that, from that private individual, I would, I would say that if they're close to that market rate, then I, I think that's a good place for Mr. Weaver to start his negotiation. I mean, uh, you know, if you're talking twenty miles down the road that they're at the market rate, then it, it doesn't hurt us to make that big jump and, and go that way. And I don't think that should be a big surprise to, to that company if they're paying that fee...
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere, and all of a sudden to have, to have a, to have a city pop up and say, we need to be, we need to be there too. I think that's, I think that's reasonable.
Your Honor, there's, there's two cell towers in Hudson. Is that, is that the private party you're looking for?
No, it's here in Riverton.
I just caution, um, seeing a gold, golden goose and strangling it. Um, but, uh, as, uh, Mr. Bailey has said, I don't think the cell phone market is going away since, um, center links, switchgear is resting at twenty-five percent usage and cell phones are just growing, so I don't think we're gonna have a problem there.
Thank you. We need a motion. You got enough? Okay. Do you have anything else for us tonight?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. My turn? Um, so I, I do wanna, I've already commented about, um, domestic violence. I had an opportunity to go to the Willow Creek School a week ago and talk to third graders about what it's like to be the mayor. And, uh, and today in my box, I've got all these thank you notes. Uh, that's pretty nice. And, um, and so I appreciate the, uh, appreciate the kids, uh, taking the time to, uh, write a thank you note and draw me a picture or two. And, uh, it was fun to go there. It's a really nice school. Uh, I got a little bit of a tour and, um, uh, it was, it was fun. Had all the third graders in there, four classes of them, and they had a lot of good questions. One of them asked if I had a limousine and, and, um, and a driver, and, um, and I said no, it was, this was not Chicago. And, um, but I said, some mayors, some mayors, you know, are better off than I am. And, um, and so we did have a good, we did have a good discussion. Uh, one little gal said her mother, uh, uh, wanted her to ask why the streets in Riverton were so rough. And, uh, and I told her she was just driving on the wrong streets. 'Cause, uh, we've got some streets in Riverton that are really nice. And, uh, and so, uh, and we're working on the others and we'll continue to work on the others. And so, that's the other, the other thing is when the, the one percent, uh, special one cent sales tax, um, has been vital to the city of Riverton from that standpoint. You take a look at, at the work that's gotten done on, uh, any street, Monroe or Broadway or, um, in the, the Logan Park or, you know, you look at any of those areas where we've done some work, uh, after, after being on council now for about seven or eight years, I can, I can remember putting a drain in at, at Jackson and North Eighth West was on the list of capital projects. And there's been a couple of pipes, one time there was a huge valley pan there, and then they put a couple of pipes in there and they're plugged up all the time. And so, there's always water standing there and weeds growing in the corner and it looks nasty and it's, and it's always been a headache. And that got fixed this year. That, this year, that got fixed. And, uh, and so, that, that bad spot is now linked into the stormwater drain system on Park Street. And, uh, how, how nice will that be this winter? And so, we'll get rid of that lake and we'll have, I mean, so you look at the wonderful projects that have been accomplished because we had access to that, to that money. And, uh, if we get it for another four years, you know, we'll do really good. And, uh, the, the, the force committee has done an excellent job of, uh, trying to figure out which streets needed the worst and how to deal with that. And, uh, and that's not a, that's not an easy thing because I know they get lots of telephone calls from people who would like their street fixed. You know, the one in front of their house is the one that needs it worst. And, um, and so I, I know that that happens and I appreciate the effort that the people in the force committee have made the last four years to, uh, guide us and direct us in that regard. And, uh, I appreciate Mr. Butterfield's effort to, uh, uh, get those projects bid appropriately and as cheaply as we can. And, uh, and so we've, I think we've done a good job with the money. The, the force committee even, even suggested that we should get a dura-patcher, uh, so that we could patch potholes. And, and they felt like that wasn't outside the intent of the one cent language. And yet, the city council looked at that and said, you know, we're just cautious about that. We wanna use every penny of that one cent money for asphalt and gravel. We wanna, we wanna make this in sewer pipes. We wanna make this money go just as far as we can possibly make it go. And so, we used some reserve funds that we had to buy the dura-patcher. And, uh, and so that's, the city has kept up their end of the deal. We still have a budget line item for streets and alleys, just like we did before we got the one cent money and, and we've kept that, we've kept that going. And so, we've tried to stretch that just as far as we possibly can. And, uh, and I think, I think we've done a good job of spending that money wisely countywide. Um, and, uh, so I appreciate, um, it'll, it'll be great if the voters agree and, uh, and say that we can have it for another four years. That'll be wonderful. And, uh, oh, yeah, Empty Bowl. Uh, the Volunteers of America, uh, you know, took over the Alcohol Crisis Center a couple of years ago. They've completely turned that operation around. This has been a wonderful thing for our community. They, of course, are, they, you know, a nonprofit organization. One of the things they do is try to raise money all the time. Uh, the end of October, there's the Empty Bowl Event, uh, that's gonna be here in Riverton, uh, where you can go and, and for ten dollars, you can buy a bowl that's been hand painted and then you can take your choice of about fifty different kinds of soup from all the people who have brought soup to that event. And, uh, and have a little fellowship and the kids have a costume contest because right at Halloween time. And, uh, there's a silent auction and there's a lot of wonderful things that have been donated, uh, for the silent auction, a lot of good art and that type of thing. And so, if you, uh, if you can come to that and support it with your ten dollars, um, then that's a wonderful thing. A family can get in for twenty-five bucks. And, uh, and then the city of Riverton is sponsoring the table, uh, and, um, that costs five hundred dollars. And how much have we got so far? We're within a hundred and fifty bucks, right?
Yeah, we've got three fifty.
We, okay, so we need, we need three more people on city council to participate with us on that in order to bring that up to five, the five hundred dollars for that. So, um, I put my money in the pot yesterday, and so we, we need three more guys to say, I'll, I'll put in, I'll put in fifty bucks, okay? So, you, you can get your money to Stephen when, so that we can, we can, we can put the VOAs, uh, concerns to rest that will have a table this year.
Your Honor...
Go ahead.
Remind me again, what date is that?
Twenty-seven.
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 It's, it's a Thursday night, right?
Thank you.
Okay. So, we tried to do it on Thursday night. We did it a year ago and there was a football game or something, and so that was a disaster. That was pulling people in too many directions, but, um...
Riverton Football Game.
Yeah, Riverton Football Game that night. So, they, they intentionally looked at the calendar this time and decided that they weren't gonna go head-on against Riverton Football Team. So, but it'll, it's a, it's one of the, you know, you go to, you go to some of these fundraisers, you know, and it costs you a hundred dollars to get in the door, and then they expect you to bid on all kinds of crazy stuff, you know, and you're gonna spend a lot of money there and, um, and, you know, and that's what they need, they need to raise money. So, Empty Bowl looks at it a different way. They want a lot of people to come. Uh, they, they, so you can go in there, start at five o'clock and they're still gonna be serving soup at seven if there's any left. And, uh, and so you can come for a few minutes and bid on an item or two if you want, and then you can go home. And, um, and so it's, uh, they hope there's some turnover, just like in a restaurant. Uh, there's gonna be different people sitting at that table every thirty minutes. So, uh, we hope that a lot of people come and participate and it's inexpensive enough that a, that a family could come and have a good, good, good meal that evening. So, I hope you'll be able to participate and, and, and do that. Um, I don't see that we have any need for an executive session, and, uh, so the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Word gone. At eight o'clock.